I'd like to call this regular January 10th Council meeting to order. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll call, please.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Musi?
Here.
Mr. Sabatini?
Mr. Polansky?
Here.
Okay, our first part of tonight's meeting will be public participation. If anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, please go up to that podium and state your name. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak? Do you want to speak? I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Valerie Seimeister. I was here at the last meeting. I reside in Bristol Township. But I would like to speak like I did before regarding the breed ban legislation and the muzzling of, now I see, dogs over 25 pounds, all dogs, and pit bulls. But my question is, who is, what exactly is a pit bull? Since it's not an actual breed, it's a social class. Usually a pit bull can encompass 30 or 35 different breeds of dog. And whose job is it going to be to say what is and what is not that type of dog? And then the cost implications of that. It's been proven that other municipalities have done it, that it's cost $750,000 a year just to enforce that law between court costs and the cost of kenneling the dogs during the time that they've been confiscated and the court date. They've actually proved in other municipalities it costs $63,000 to kennel one dog for the year. So I was wondering where those costs were to come from, whose job it was going to be to enforce these laws, and if everybody was aware of the implications of a general person muzzling their dog on a daily basis for walks? How that's going to affect the dog's behavior in the long run? Turning, you know, a normal dog into something that could potentially be aggressive just because it is muzzled? It has like a different appearance to other dogs, and other dogs are going to be fearful, thus creating aggression towards that dog. So I think just by muzzling one particular breed, you're turning a small problem into something that's going to end up being much bigger than what it is now. I think we need to enforce leash laws, enforce the people who are actually breaking the law to contain their dog rather than making it a community-wide event. I think if that happens, we won't need this whole muzzling of a certain breed of dog.
Okay. Just for the record, we spoke last month for about an hour and 40 minutes on this subject. Tonight, there's three things on the agenda.
Yeah, I saw that.
One is the leash law. One is a recommendation from Councilman Lutz, who wanted to muzzle all dogs 25 pound or over. And the third thing on the agenda was a recommendation from myself and members of council is to muzzle all pit bull and pit bull breeds. This is only to advertise the agenda. Next month, in February, we will adopt one of these three or two out of three, the leash law, I think the entire council agrees upon. So I'm prepared at next month's meeting to do a complete presentation on why I feel we should muzzle pit bulls and all pit bull breeds. I would like you to attend that meeting and give me the opportunity to prove to you and whoever else is here why. I don't know if Mr. Lutz will be, I'll have asked him when we're done tonight or before we vote on it, if he wants to do a presentation on why he feels all dogs 25 pound or over should be muzzled. So again, this is only to advertise, and I'd like you to come back in February and voice your opinion and hear what we have to say.
Yeah, just so you know that research what a pit bull is.
I did.
Know that it's not an actual breed.
I am prepared to do a complete presentation at February's meeting.
And 25 pounds and over, I mean, I have a puppy at home that's 16 weeks old, it's 25 pounds. I mean, am I going to muzzle a puppy out when I'm taking it for a walk? Doesn't make any sense. Thanks.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak?
My name's Michelle Gallyon, and I live here in the borough. I'm just going to kind of add on to the last point that she made, that in 2000, Reading, Pennsylvania tried to pass a similar ordinance. I think it was to muzzle all pit bulls and have them on a three-foot leash was the rule. And it took eight years and thousands of dollars, and the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania ruled that Reading's ordinance violated the state law. So I'm not sure how you're going to write yours so that it turns out differently, but I just think that it's something you guys should know.
Thank you. Side of the room? Like that ends public participation. All right, before we get started on this agenda, again, number seven, eight, and nine are the three things that was discussed in detail. Just for, I want to go back on record, I know that the carrier wanted to do a retraction on the comment that said that I wanted to muzzle all dogs 25 pound or over. I think what I said to Mr. Matar was, it didn't matter, I'll explain it at the next meeting. We were voting on three. After the meeting, I said to the carrier that three things would be the leash law, the 25 pounds or over, which Mr. Lutz recommended, and the muzzle for pit bull or pit bull breeds. And the way he wanted to explain that, it got, you know, it gets edited and things like that. So again, I'm not in favor of muzzling all dogs. I mean, to me, it's just absurd, 25 pound or over. But again, maybe Mr. Lutz has a good recommendation why. So before we get to number eight, Jimmy, I can give you the opportunity now to, if you want to add anything or why we should be doing this to convince.
Yeah, I just, should we go through the agenda and we come to the item, I'll be happy to discuss it. Point of order. We had an agenda before. Let's go through the agenda.
Okay.
We'll get to it soon enough.
The number two on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to approve the section 1213-14, accept the Treasury report for November, accept the police and DJ's report, accept the fire chiefs report, and accept the boroughs inspectors report.
By Ms. Trinell, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to adopt an ordinance amending the code of ordinances regarding regulations relating to engine brake retarders on highways within the borough.
Second by Mr. Musi, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to adopt a motion authorizing the HARB to review all applications for properties in the historic overlay district who wishes to paint the outside of their homes, buildings.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Polansky, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve a three-year contract with Leo Polansky III for the athletic field maintenance in the amount of $12,000 per year, which includes cleaning the bathrooms.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Trinell, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman. Three-year contract becomes a $36,000 contract. Shouldn't this go out the bid?
No.
You shouldn't go out the bid?
The reason for it's maintenance, and I think in the past there were three-year contracts, and we feel that by locking in a three-year contract, we have a price that we can put in our budget and we know won't go up, because if anything, it's never going to go down.
Could we get any, could we be getting this any cheaper?
Could we?
Yeah.
I don't think council's interested in it.
Well, if you don't, if you don't bid it, you'll never know.
I didn't hear what you said.
If you don't bid it, you'll never know.
You're right. But I think that the Fields family, for years, for 50 or 40 years, did these fields with no problems. I think that Leo did the fields when he was there and with his uncle and his, I think that we're happy with this, and I don't see any reason why we're looking to change it.
Well, I think it should be bid, period.
Okay, that's your opinion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Number seven.
Number six.
Fields, Mr. Polansky. Six, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Penn Dot's offer of just compensation per 122310 letter in the amount of $24,800, tax parcel number 4682.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising a leash law ordinance.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? I think in this law that we agree that all dogs should be on a leash. Now, the ordinance says a six-foot leash. Mr. Salerno, why don't you explain that?
Yeah, currently, our confinement ordinance, which is the same as the state ordinance, basically says that if the dog is not on your property, it needs to be under reasonable control. And unfortunately, some of the courts have interpreted that to mean that you don't have to have your dog on a leash as long as it obeys your commands. Well, obviously, we know that doesn't work. And we've determined after meetings with the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture and the legislate, the committee chairman, that we are free to toughen the confinement law. And we, like other municipalities, I think even Harrisburg, we're now going to define reasonable control to mean you have to have your dog on a leash and still maintain it under reasonable control, which means if you give an 80-pound dog to an 11-year-old child that weighs 80 pounds, and that dog gets away from the child, you're still going to be in violation of the law. So putting it on a leash in itself is not enough. But you're going to have to have every dog on a leash and keep it under reasonable control, which means the leash has to be strong enough for that dog, and you have to be able to hold that dog. And the six-foot, you know, that's up to council's discretion. I've read different ordinances. It could be five foot, it could be six foot. We thought six foot was reasonable. That's up to council. If they want to change the length, they can do that.
One thing I wanted to make clear is that we don't know if six foot is the proper, I didn't get a chance, I wanted to try to run into Pet Smarts or one of them to measure a standard leash. I don't know what, they may be four foot, so we put six foot down, it's a number, hope we could always adjust that number. We know we don't want it longer than six foot, but I don't know if there's a standard leash. And again, that could be cleared up in February. I'm sure we could change that number from six to five if we had to. Or no. But we could always do another one if we had to amend that.
We can, I don't think we can make it shorter without re-advertising.
Can we make it?
I mean, I think council would need to decide before it's advertised.
Oh, and if anybody don't eat, leash is six foot, so let's leave it at six foot. Any other questions or comments on the leash law? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number eight. You don't want to do anything? I don't know. It's up to you, I could just.
Well, I didn't ask for it to be on the agenda.
What did you did?
No, you certainly did not.
Well, I played a tape back.
Well, you play it back.
Monday night's meeting that you said, "I want to muzzle all dogs 25 pound or over," and put it on the agenda.
I'm not interested in making the motion.
That's fine, but I'm going to, before we leave.
But I'll make a comment under number nine.
Wait a minute, just let me finish. Before we leave, I'm going to see if we can pull it up, play it on the screen, what you said.
You can do that.
Okay.
It was your decision, it was your decision to put it on the agenda.
Jimmy, I think we, I don't know, maybe it's me, but before we left here, we made it clear.
You did. You said, "I'll have three items on the agenda." I did not ask for it to be on the agenda.
What did you say? You said you wanted to muzzle all dogs 25 pound or over. Did you not say that?
I'll tell you exactly what I said when we get to number nine.
Well, I'm going to, I like.
But I'm not making a motion for number eight.
I like that video to be replayed here.
I wasn't interested in making it, putting it on the agenda to start with.
That's fine. Well, I.
Well, you can play it back, Ralph.
We are. That I will have played back in this.
That's fine.
Council chamber. Okay, so there's no motion on number eight, you just move forward. Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising an ordinance for the muzzling of pit bulls and/or pit bull breeds, and I'd like to make a comment after you get a second.
Second by Mrs. Collin, questions or comments? Betty, I'll go to you first.
Yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't here last Tuesday, I had to work. And this is a really awkward situation. It's our job to make sure that the safety of the people of Bristol Borough comes first. I understand, I know Ms. Gallyon here, I understand how you people feel about your pets, and I know I have pets, and I've been in a situation where my son's dog was attacked by a pit bull, and we say, well, we should go after the owners, and we should go after the people that have the aggressive dogs, but it doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way. Unfortunately, his dog was not a little dog, it was an American Bulldog, it was probably bigger than the pit bull. It ended up costing us thousands of dollars. The people we did try to go after moved out of town. Then the landlord didn't seem to know where they went, didn't have any money to help us. Nobody can help us. Now, it's not just because it's close to home that I'm sitting here, it's because I have to protect the people that come to me and say, "When are you going to do something about it?" It doesn't mean it's going to help the situation. I don't know, you don't know, we don't know. Most of the times that these situations have happened, the dogs have come out of the home, jumped over the fences. It doesn't mean that we're going to sit here and do this, and it's going to, we're going to say, "We did it, we're successful." We don't know that. But at this point in time, we don't know what else to do. So, you know, I understand how you feel, but you got to understand, you know, what we have to do. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments?
I have a black lab, and he's about 100 pounds. And I'd even be willing to muzzle him, because I don't think that it would hurt him. So, you know, I'm really worried about little dogs. I've seen a little dog get attacked by a pit bull. It was very frightening. There were two adults trying to pull the dog off. The man that was trying to do it scraped his arm and was bleeding. An ambulance had to come for him. That same dog had, prior to that, killed another dog. So I just, like, I know we're not definitely clear about this and how it's going to be done, but like I said, I have a dog, and he's almost 100 pounds, and I'd be willing to muzzle him as well, because I don't think that it harms a dog to muzzle a dog. So, and I love my dog just as much as anybody else does.
Jimmy.
Mr. Chairman, at the work session, I offered some, what I thought were suggestions for dealing with the problem and some recommendations. You asked me for, a good four times, if I was in favor of muzzling, I said no.
Right.
And eventually you said to me, "Are you in favor of muzzling 25, dogs 25 pounds and over?" I suggested muzzling dogs 25 pounds and over to try to comply with the law. Now, the law is really pretty specific about discriminating against special breeds of dogs. I would hope that you guys would have picked up on that recommendation, but you didn't. Mrs. Irwin from the Bucks County SPCA indicated to us that she spoke to somebody from the Department of Agriculture, who told her that it was illegal, that he felt it was illegal to do that, to muzzle pit bulls. We got a letter in December from best friends. Woman's name was Lauren Gallagher, from Kenob, Utah. She's a public service attorney who pointed out the law in Pennsylvania and about muzzling pit bulls. She said it's illegal. Now, we've had a couple of attorneys tell us that. And my suggestion to muzzle all dogs was not an endorsement of muzzling. I was trying to get you off of the discrimination against pit bulls. It's somewhere down the line, it's going to cost us far more money in legal fees, because you will lose the case.
When did you get your law degree?
I don't need a law degree.
Apparently, apparently, you, you're, you're sitting here.
Could try this case and win it. Now, if you want me to point, if you want me to point out, if you want me to point out that the law, over the weekend, since last week, the Pennsylvania Dog Law, 59 pages. Section in here, and I'll read it, and you've probably already seen it, or you've, reference has already been made to it. It's called Local Ordinances, under Statute 459507A. Those provisions of local ordinances relating to dangerous dogs are hereby abrogated. A local ordinance otherwise dealing with dogs may not prohibit or otherwise limit a specific breed of dog. First-year law student.
Without going through the whole argument, as I explained at the last meeting, that section has been quoted correctly, but it's under the Dangerous Dog section, not under the Confinement Law section, number one. Number two, I think it would be the borough's position that we are not prohibiting or limiting pit bulls. We are not stating that pit bulls cannot be in Bristol. We are not stating that pit bulls cannot be walked in public. We're just saying that they need to be muzzled. Number two, and I've heard this Reading case thrown out several times, I am familiar with it, it is distinguished from our situation, but what, just to address this issue about a first-year law student, in the Reading case, even though the Commonwealth Court overturned that statute, the trial court, the judge on the trial level sustained that ordinance. So at least there was one judge who felt that it was legal, in addition to, I'm sure, the solicitor of Reading. So I don't think it's so open and shut, as people want to make it seem.
Have you got a copy of the?
I have it all. I've read it all.
And in reference to different departments and different government agencies that dealt with.
Let me say this, and I'll say like I did last week. The attorney for the Department of Agriculture will not make this decision, okay? The judge on the magistrate level will make the decision, and then that will get appealed to the trial court, and someone, a judge in Doylestown will make a decision. And then if that gets appealed, it will go to Commonwealth Court. They are the, they are the people that will make this decision of whether this ordinance is legal or not.
Okay. Well, the bottom line is this, I'm not interested in voting for anything that is a violation of state law, period. Move the question.
Well, I'm not done, I want to speak on. On Monday, on Tuesday evening, when we met, we went through this for an hour and 40 minutes. You said there were other alternatives, you wanted to put more emphasis on the owner of the dog, you wanted zero tolerance, am I correct? You went through this whole thing, and then you said you read an article that there was other alternatives, you know, to thing, the leash, you were going through a lot of different things. And you said you would feel. Let me, I gave you the floor.
Okay.
And I, we're trying to get the tape so we can play it right now, it needs a couple more minutes. You said that, and I'm going to see if I'm wrong, because the tape's going to be played as soon as we can, but you had said you would feel terrible if a Doberman, or a shepherd, or somebody else bit another dog. And we asked you, I asked you several times, well, what is the solution? You said, "I think all dogs 20," at the end of your last statement was, "All dogs 25 pound or over should be muzzled." So I said to you, "Mr. Lutz, are you saying we should muzzle all dogs 25 pound or over?" You said absolutely, okay? So then, now let me, I gave you the floor.
You're right.
Then I said to council, "On Monday's agenda, there will be three items. One, the leash law. Two would be Mr. Lutz's motion to muzzle all dogs 25 pound or over. Three would be to muzzle all pit bull and pit bull breeds. Am I correct?" You said yes. So now you're saying you didn't say that.
No. Listen, you asked me four times if I, if I wanted to muzzle dogs, and I told you no.
Right.
Now, you kept on badgering me, and it finally occurred.
Badgered you?
Yeah. It finally occurred to me, Ralph, that it doesn't really matter what I think.
Why not?
There are seven people here tonight. This vote will be six to one. Now, at some.
We're going to support your motion tonight.
Nobody made the motion.
You, it was your agenda item.
You put it on the agenda, I didn't put it on.
We only put it on there because you wanted it on there.
I suggested it, hoping that you would back off of the pit bull ordinance.
Why? Why would I back off of something?
The pit bull ordinance is illegal.
Well, you think it's illegal.
It's real simple, Ralph.
You think the pit bull ordinance is illegal?
No, the state thinks it's illegal.
Okay, well.
And I agree with the state.
You're changing your whole.
What?
You're changing the whole concept of what's going on here.
It doesn't matter, Ralph.
You wanted to protect.
The vote's going to be six to one tonight, and that's fine.
You wanted to protect the people in this town.
And if somebody else thought that was a good idea, they would have made the motion tonight. They didn't do that.
Why would they make a motion for something?
Well, if they're in favor of it, they would, wouldn't they?
Something you wanted.
No, you put it on the agenda. Play the tape.
I'm sure everybody sitting in this audience watched the meeting at home and knows exactly what you said.
We're going to move the motion.
Anybody else want to comment on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay. We need to suspend the rules to add an agenda item.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add an agenda item.
I get a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Peter Fait as acting sergeant to the Bristol Borough Police Department.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Collin. Mayor, why don't you, if you can, give us, it was your recommendation to give council a brief why you think Mr. Fait should be the acting sergeant? Do you mind?
Not at all. My recommendation was to appoint him acting sergeant because of the fact that we have in our budget four positions for sergeant, and we only have two at the present time now that are certified by civil service. When I retired as a sergeant, council appointed Officer Hankinson, who was probably the next in line as far as seniority goes, that wasn't a ranking officer. So under my recommendation, it was to appoint Officer Fait, because he's the next officer to be appointed as a seniority. In June of this year, I'm going to request that civil service give the sergeant's test, because under the civil service laws, it states that a full-time officer must be full-time for 10 years before he can take the sergeant's test. At this time, no one is eligible to take the test, because the next, the next three officers will be here 10 years in June. And I felt that because we went with seniority with Officer Hankinson, that we should go with seniority with Officer Fait, not only because of seniority. I trained, I basically trained Officer Fait, and I know he's a good officer. And I know he's a good officer, he does the job very well. You ask him to do something, he'll do it. No ifs, ands, or buts. And that's why I feel that he should be appointed as acting sergeant.
Okay. Any questions for the mayor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have nothing else on the agenda. I don't know if you want to play this tape or if you can get it. Sure. Yeah, I want to, before we adjourn, we're due for another major snowstorm. I don't know if they're calling for six to 12 inches. I mean, after last year, getting two feet or more. But there's a lot of comments and a lot of complaints about, "I seen a truck going down my street with the plow up. Nobody was doing anything." There's a system that you need to understand. Sometimes they're coming down, putting salt down. And after the salt starts to melt some of the ice on the bottom, they come back and plow again. And while they're plowing, they're also dropping salt. There's also people that say, "Well, I never seen a truck come down my street." You think that is totally impossible unless your street doesn't exist in Bristol Borough? We have eight trucks on the road. If there's a street that you're telling us that there's not a plow that's been down that street, we want to know what street, because every borough employee is assigned to an area. And when their area is done, they start doing alleys. So, I think the service they're providing is, I mean, people that come in town that I talk to say, "You need to come into our area or our towns to see how bad the roads are compared to Bristol." You could see block top on your streets. Don't forget, a plow could only go down to an inch and a half above the street, because if not, it'd be ripping open manhole covers and wooder main boxes and things like that. That's another reason why people say, "Well, my street has still got a little bit of snow on it." I think these guys do a great job. You get in a plow in a major snowstorm with snow blowing, with a six or seven-foot plow in front of your truck, when you have eight inches on each side or a foot on each side to go down the street, it's not an easy job. And you're using a joystick to rotate that plow left or right or straight. So, you know, have some consideration. I mean, you guys are telling me, they're driving by, people are screaming at them, "Drop your plow." I mean, if you really knew what they were doing in these storms, and they're plowing sometimes for 18, 20 straight hours. So, you know, if they take a break at Wawa, or they take a break at somewhere to get a coffee or something, they're entitled to it. Not that right away everybody wants to say, "I seen the borough trucks, they were taking a half-hour break." Big deal. They took a break. Who, who works every day on any job would ever, without ever stopping for a half-hour, an hour, to get some deet or a coffee or something?
Mr. Dillon, I'm sorry.
So, consider what's going on with these snowstorms and how hard they're working. And our emergency management coordinator, Merle Winslow, is in constant contact with George and the crew. He knows what's going on with the weathers, if there's electric lines down. So, there's a whole team of people put in place to handle this. The firemen are all in there, make sure that their trucks are ready to go. So, it's not just, "Oh, we got snow and nobody really cares." There's a lot of people affected by this, and they do the best job they can. Instead of criticizing them, we should be not, we should be thanking them, even though they get paid. I don't know if he's going to get this tape off for tonight.
He can still watch it, it's on TV.
Oh, I know it is. I know exactly what it says.
I know what it says, too.
Okay.
There's no point, Ralph.
But this wasn't my-
I answered beyond the agenda. I offered it as a suggestion. So, there are five other members of council here tonight that had an option. If they didn't want to vote for pit bulls, they could have voted for the other one. Nobody showed any interest in making the motion. It's a dead issue. Got something?
Can I say something about the snow? Or is it too late?
I recognize Liz, I don't know, yeah, you're-
That's fine.
Good evening. Liz Fisher, 1102 Wood Street. And this is not a game. It's not something to play with. Mr. De Giuseppe, I will tell you that you and I started talking about this issue 10 years ago. If you remember, I'm sure you do. I picked up speed three years ago after my second dog was injured. And I said, "Enough is enough." And a lot of people joined me in that saying, "No more, no more of this. We have to do something." And the council has done something all along. We had a House bill that we worked very hard for. And you, this is a very horrendous issue to try to decide. It's a very delicate issue to try to decide. And, you know, we just have to go forward whichever way it goes. And I'm hoping that, you know, I have, our Beagle Luna is over 25 pounds. I'll muzzle her when I walk her, if that, if that would be the solution. But you have to be very responsible. I understand how hairy this issue is. I do know that. I'm hoping that at some point, citizens can come together and talk, as we've been trying to get for the last three years, and talk and come to a solution that will be fair to everybody. But you have led this, this council has led this, and you've been unafraid, and I thank you.
Thank you. I don't think Mr. Dillon's going to get this tape up and running that quick, so I'll have that with my presentation. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry. Thing about the snow. Could we instruct the borough guys when they do- Could we instruct the gang when they do plow to help out with the fire companies?
They're all, Merle's in contact with them.
Meeting with the chiefs and the presidents last week, and they, they were kind of concerned that it hasn't been done.
What do you need them to do?
Help plow the driveways for them, so they can get the trucks out.
So, we're not taking care of that, Merle?
I asked you earlier to answer your question about the snow. It's been 40 days since the air, but I saw him since then, and he said he never did.
Well, I think the last snow wasn't high enough to worry about a truck pulling out. I mean, I could pull out a fire truck with-
Actually, when the snow started coming down, it was falling down for about an hour or so. We had it fall down on Beaver Street. And there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of snow, but the conditions were very icy. I got a truck that's 40,000 pounds, and it's kind of sliding all over, going 10 miles an hour. Anyway, when I wanted to bring it back up on the ramp, I had it in reverse. Tried to get back up, took me three attempts, but the wheels turning backwards were sliding forward. So, even when I put the brake on, it was sliding, so just like, there was nobody walking across.
Well, the problem is, I don't care how big of a vehicle you have, when you're on ice, you're not going to stop it. So, everybody thinks because they drive an SUV, it's, it's good in the snow, but it's not good on ice. And when you're putting salt down, it's when it, as it melts it, it also freezes it right away. The only thing that's going to cause, keep it from not freezing is constant driving over it. So, I know the cops calling, correct chief, they'll call George 2, 3 o'clock in the morning and say, "The roads are getting bad. We'll have guys come out and salt." And again, if you're not, there's no traffic on that road, that road's going to become a sheet of ice, because cars are going to keep that. But as far as moving snow, I mean, there's, I don't think we would ever refuse that from-
I'll just, you know, comment to my company downstairs, it wasn't done. I had to contact Merle.
And we have buckets of salt, Tony, right in the burrow. You could just grab it and throw it on your-
We did, we did the whole, you know, the whole farm area. We have salt, we don't have a problem dealing with that.
Okay. You showing us or not? Do you have it? How long is it? Screen?
Popcorn in England?
What about it?
You doing one?
This. Oh, do it for me?
Yes.
I got this one, aren't you there? Shredder. I think they have your meeting-
I saw the, um, the idiot.
This is the beginning, Max?
Yeah, well, I forget the clip. This is just the clip. I don't want to do it.
So, you want the motion to read, "All dogs must be muzzled."
No, you're not at the beginning there.
I have a little old pomeranian, or a yorkie that weighs five or 10 pounds.
Well, I, I mean, tell us what you, what your part of the thing is.
I did. I said size and weight. Any dog that's 25 pounds or more has to be muzzled. I don't care what breed, a woman, or a Great Bane, or a Saint Bernard, it's whatever 25 pounds you muzzled.
Uh, I can't understand it.
That's your recommendation.
That's your recommendation.
Ralph, I don't deny, listen. I don't deny, did it say, "Put it on the agenda"? No. I didn't ask for it to be on the agenda, so I don't make a big deal about it. I made a recommendation, a suggestion to you, so you would get off the other one. Fine.